I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board meeting. If you would stand, I've asked Pastor John Henson from Thrive Christian Fellowship to lead us in an invitational prayer. If you'd please stand.
Thank you very much. Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening for this group that's here. God, thank you for these men and women that you have put in this position, Lord, to lead as they lead. And we thank you for their strengths. We thank you for their teamwork. We thank you for the positive difference that they're making in this county, Father. So we pray your wisdom. We pray your grace upon them as they lead us. And they lead this meeting tonight, Lord. We thank you for the staff. We thank you for the administration. We thank you for the parents in this community, Lord, that have come together to make this community stronger. Lord, we thank you for the strength that we have to meet tonight, Lord. And we pray, God, as you tell us in your word, to focus on that which is true and noble and honorable and praiseworthy, that that would be the end-all goal of each of us tonight, Father. So may this time be good. May the success be great. And Lord, may we just continue to receive our strength from you, Lord. And it is in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
You remain standing. We're going to have a pledge allegiance led by King George Elementary School Today Show. And then after that, we'll have a moment of silence. Be seated. All right. To begin with, we have a recognition and I'll refer to.
They would like to introduce themselves.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. I'm Mrs. Richard and I am the sponsor of the King George Elementary School Today Show. And I have a wonderful crew of students and they've all would like to at least introduce themselves tonight. Thank you.
I am Alexis Corman and I am a broadcast associate.
Hi, I'm Thatcher Thomas and I'm an anchor. I'm responsible for on-camera delivery of news.
Hi, my name is Emerson Rollins. I'm the anchor journalist. I'm responsible for gathering news and responsible for on-camera delivery of news.
My name is Danica Pickle. I'm an anchor and a journalist. I'm responsible for gathering the news.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Tice and I'm responsible for the on-camera delivery of news.
Hi, my name is Emery. I'm a technical director and I am responsible for setting up the cameras, lights, and microphone.
Hi, my name is Sophia Patterson Patton and I'm responsible for, acts as a substitute for anchor who are absent.
Hi, my name is Carl Johnson and I am a broadcast association. I check to see if the Today Show is being viewed by all classrooms.
My name is Kelsey Conlon and I check to make sure that, check to see if the Today Show is being viewed by all classrooms.
My name is Reagan Sevier and I am a news director and I assign tasks to the news crew.
My name is Delaney DeSantis and I act as a substitute anchor for other anchors who are absent.
My name is Colleen Curry and I am only sometimes on camera.
My name's Lucy McCready and I'm an anchor slash journalist responsible for gathering news.
Hi, I'm Amy Walker. I wish I wasn't on the camera.
My name is Gavin Pfeifer and I am an anchor. I'm responsible for the on-camera delivery of news.
My name is Ames Lee and I'm a substitute for people that are not here.
My name is Abigail Tom and I'm a broadcast associate. I act as a substitute anchor for anchors who are absent. And I assist with any and all behind-the-scenes jobs.
Thank you for letting me introduce my staff and thank you to all of the parents who were willing to bring their students this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And please forgive me for not immediately recognizing. I'm sorry. I was looking at this. Forgive me. It was wonderful. Thank you very much for the Today Show. Any questions from board members that they may want to ask? Anybody?
What was in the news today?
That's a good question.
So we share things like what is for lunch, the band schedule on this day in history, weird but true trivia, upcoming information for the PTA. We have the penny war coming up, so we're encouraging all of our students to start saving their coins so they can help the penny wars and help our school raise some money for the PTA.
Awesome. Thank you.
This looks like it's a growing group. I remember it's much larger than last year, so that's.
I have about five students every day. I will give a shout out to Reagan who comes every morning and helps with the editing of our Today Show. And she's an amazing news director, so I'm very thankful for her.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Give another hand. All right, let's move on. Recognition. Dr. Boyd, if you would introduce the one we're recognizing.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a very special recognition this evening. Just a few weeks ago, from Ms. Hock, we received information that we had a donation of a double bass to our King George Middle School. So if I could have Ms. Connor come forward from the King George Middle School as our band director, and also Ms. Jean Newman and Bill Birmingham, if you guys could please come forward. And Mr. Schaefer, yes, sir, please do come forward. So on behalf of King George County Schools, we most certainly appreciate the donation of the double bass to King George Middle School. We do have a plaque in commemoration of the donation that I would like to come down and present and read if I could. Okay, so, all right, all right. I can use my quarterback voice. Okay, so it says, "King George, this plaque commemorates the many gifts of James Jim Newman to the world. The donation of the double bass instrument to King George School's music department demonstrates Jim's love for music and his desire to support music in the lives of youth, presented to the family of James Jim Newman on the sixth day of September 2023." Thank you so much.
And this is Bill Birmingham. He was the temporary.
Birmingham, who was the foster parent of our bass.
That's right.
Jim and Bill played together in that wonderful band, Keep Off The Grass, back in the.
Cheap signs, you know. Oh, yes.
Yes.
Forty-one years.
And finally, they got it.
Well, thank you greatly. We really appreciate it. Thank you on behalf of King George County Schools.
Yes, thank you. It's awesome. Oh, my gosh.
And also a special thanks to Ms. Hock for putting a lot of this together. Thank you, and let's give her a hand. All right, before we go on to the next item, we have two new members on the board and I was thinking about waiting till the end, but it was suggested that I introduce or they introduce themselves, Millie, at the beginning. So we have two new members, student reps and one from the middle school, one from the high school. So we'll start with the high school. And would you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Chad Brown. I'm a junior at King George High School.
Would you introduce yourself?
You pushed.
There you go.
Hi, my name's Maddie. I'm in eighth grade from the middle school.
We are very glad that both of you are here. And at the end, under board comments, if you would like, there'll always be an opportunity for you to talk about what's going on in your school or even finding out from other students what's going on and letting not only the board know, but even the community. So we'll give you another opportunity to present that. Thank you very much for being here as school board reps, as student reps. Thank you.
Welcome, both.
All right, public comments? We don't have any. Do we have any online? Oh, okay, good. All right, changes to the agenda. I have one, but does anybody have one? Mr. Rolls, it looks like you know. Yes?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, I have one, but it may not be a change. We got an email, I don't know if it was yesterday or today, about another request for the religious exemption. Has everyone on the board read that? If they haven't, okay, then I won't put it on. If everybody had read that, I would put it on the agenda, but since you haven't, there's at least one that has it, we'll have to wait till next time. You haven't read it either. Okay, that's fine. All right, any other changes? So we're not adding that unless everybody had seen that. All right, we'll move on to action items. Policy JEG, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. This is a follow-up of our conversation at the last board meeting. Policy JEG is our exclusion and exemptions from school attendance. Specifically, we were discussing our religious exemptions and a desire to solidify a due date that was well before the start of the school year for our students that were interested in applying to be religiously exempt. So we added the, I think it's highlighted in your board packet. You'll see in the second paragraph, I'll just read the sentence that was added in the revision. Any request for exemption under Virginia Code 22.1-254.B1 must be submitted in writing to the King George County School Board four weeks on or before the first day of the school year. The addition is the four weeks on or before the first day of the school year.
All right, yes, we added that as per the board's request to make it clear. Do I have a motion?
We have some discussion first.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, sure.
When we discussed this last time, we had talked about trying to add some language there to make it flexible for folks such as we just got this exemption request a few days ago, so that if you don't have the opportunity to do it four weeks prior, there's that flexibility. And I don't see that in there right now, so I'd like to add that. And then also saying four weeks on or before. The first day, I think the on or before is kind of, seems a little bit awkward. I think we were just saying we want it at least four weeks before. So my suggested rewording would be to delete the on or before and then also insert between King George County School Board and four weeks, say, and is requested to be submitted at least four weeks before the first day of the new school year.
And then what did you want to add concerning any?
Well, I say, since I said and is requested, that implies that it's.
As requested.
Asking for it. It's not required. I mean, people can put it in whenever they need to.
All right, do you want to add that and make that an action item for next time till you can see the wording? Or do you want to give an action item now?
Can I ask, so what do you want it to say? Must be submitted in writing to the King George County School Board as requested?
I'll read the whole sentence, just for that in context to make it easier. So, any request for exemption under Virginia Code, the code, must be submitted in writing to the King George County School Board and is requested to be submitted at least four weeks before the first day of the new school year.
What does that additional language add?
The additional was and is requested.
No, I know, but what value does that add to the sentence?
It emphasizes that it's a request and not a requirement. So there's flexibility. If people can't meet the four weeks, then.
Okay, I don't know that that language indicates that it's flexible.
And is requested? I mean, a request is not a requirement, right?
I guess. Seems like semantics to me.
Well, I'd like to add that the staff contacts who are working with these large numbers of homeschool requests do need that information and as early as possible. So I don't think is requested carries the appropriate connotation.
And we'll go ahead. And before I speak, did you have a comment, Ms. Hoover?
I think we're just trying to eliminate, from what I'm gathering, eliminate, it has to be done four weeks because I know people move in two weeks before and they might read that as, oh, now it's too late. So can we somehow put flexibility in there? Like, obviously, there's got to be exceptions.
Well, and all that takes is a phone call.
I think what we're saying is that, you know, we as a board would have the authority to receive those applications and make that exception as we would at the next board meeting. I think we have the authority to do that anytime during the year. I'm just afraid if we change it too much as requested, then they could think, well, hey, I'm sorry, I haven't done that yet. I've been here for six months. I'll just do it now. School's starting tomorrow. But another comment, yes?
May I make a suggestion? How about, I agree with Mr. Rolls about deleting the on or before, just say, submit in writing four weeks before the first day of the new school year. And how about at the end of that paragraph, we add a sentence that say, "exceptions will be considered on a case-by-case basis."
Mr. Rolls?
I'm just reading the current last sentence. One second. That works.
Okay, I mean, I don't care. You could put that after the highlighted sentence. It doesn't really matter. Just be a catch-all, right?
I think that's.
Do we want to bring it back or do we think we have that clearly enough?
What's the, what does the board feel? Do we need to bring it back?
I mean, we've done this a number of times. I would recommend we bring it back and make sure it's captured.
All right, we'll bring it back with the exact wording. Yes.
Just to be sure, the last sentence was, "exceptions are considered on a case-by-case basis."
Yeah, exceptions will be.
Will be considered.
On a case-by-case basis. And then strike the on or.
Just put.
After four weeks. On or, yeah, so four weeks before.
Four weeks before the first day of school. Four weeks before the first day of the new school year and exceptions will be considered on a case-by-case basis.
We're going to move that sentence.
Right, right after. Yes. Is that right?
Sounds good.
All right. And we'll bring it back as per the request from Ms. Gonzalez to the next board meeting. All right, next item, policy BDDC-F3.
So again, this is a continuation of our conversation last time concerning the agenda and the format of the agenda for disciplinary hearings and the desire to hold a vote following the outcome of the disciplinary hearing. We did create policy, or excuse me, file or form BDDC-F3. It is in your packet. And you'll see now that that agenda is titled disciplinary hearing, just like the other agendas in our policy manual right now, with the exception of item number four, which shows the board going into closed session with a motion, returning from open session, and certifying that what was discussed going in was what we discussed in the meeting. And then finally, number five there, the action resulting from the closed session with a board vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a question? The number five, the action resulting from a closed session, I don't know that it needs to say, "I move that the King George County School Board reconvenes in open meeting" because we just returned to open session. Above that, it would seem to be the number five could be simplified to say, "I move that pursuant to state code 2.2-3711B, the school board moves to approve disciplinary action as discussed."
I had a similar comment. So I would just ask to say that, but then maybe also add on to the end of that, say, "and documented in closed session." To acknowledge that we.
Say it again?
So it would say, "I move to approve the disciplinary action as discussed and documented in closed session." Just to acknowledge that we, as we recorded it and signed in the paper.
Any other comments about that? I don't think this requires necessarily a vote. If we could just do that and make that change?
So I just want to confirm.
Sure.
So it says, we're removing, we keep, "I move that," we take out, "The King George County School convenes in open meeting."
No.
No, keep, "I move that the King George County School Board."
Okay. Take out convenes in open.
Or, sorry, "I move that pursuant to state code," da-da-da, the King George County School Board approves approves the disciplinary actions as discussed and documented in closed session.
And documented in closed session.
And then if I can speak in reference to that, if we look at C, I made a recommendation just to help with all this because I know there's been quite a bit of discussion. Is this form that is normally, if you look at the next item under that, which has, which says, "Motion for the student disciplinary hearing." If you look at that, then right at the bottom, just to help a little bit, I put seconded by and then the vote that we did. I don't need to do that, but this is just simply a reminder for whosever chairing the meeting that it's a motion. Yes. Comments about that? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but I don't know that there's value in the seconded by because nowhere on it does it say who's making the motion. And the board vote, I don't, like, I don't see why this needs to be spelled out any more than any of our other votes. I would just, I don't know that the two lines at the bottom are necessary.
Well, the reason why I put that because of all the discussions, yes.
Before you go on, can we go back to the last thing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was, all right, go ahead.
Such a good question. I don't have it right in front of me. I didn't look it up, but Dr. Boyd, since you included the pursuant to state code 2.2-3711B, I don't know offhand, because I think that covers, what is that?
I think that was the motion to reconvene in open meeting and take a vote on what was decided in closed session, I believe.
I think that's 3712D, I wanted to say. Just might want to check that before we finalize that part.
Are you looking for that?
I'm looking for it. And what is it? B?
Yes, B. 3711.
3711. B.
I mean, my recommendation was just to cut that whole part out and just put the motion in without reference to any state code and I'd be happy with that.
Yeah, I don't know. I agree. I don't know that needs state code either.
Okay. So can somebody just tell me what the.
Yeah, what?
Sure. "I move that the King George County School Board approves the disciplinary action as discussed and documented in closed session."
And leave out the pursuant code thing? Feeling of the rest of the board? Mr. Rolls?
That sounds good.
Okay, "I move that the King George County School Board approves disciplinary action as discussed and documented in closed session."
Yes, that makes it simple. As for the next item, yeah, we don't have to put that. I was just, with all the discussion we had, I was just trying to add some further documentation, but I'm fine if we don't want to put that. That's fine. It's assuming, because you're right, we don't know who made, we didn't write who made the motion, so why should we write who was seconded by? I was only doing that simply to make sure that we did take a vote on it. That's all. In other words.
You'd have to put that, I'm sorry, you'd have to put that in everything we do there because we make many.
Right. If you remember the discussion, there was some concern that at a particular disciplinary hearing that some people didn't remember voting for that. So that was the only reason that I added that. But if we're fine with that, then let's just take it off, especially because now we've got this new wording in what we just discussed.
So we do have to follow in the minutes, the same procedure as all our other minutes, where you're going to say, who made the motion, who seconded it, and what the vote was by person.
It would be in the minutes.
As long as we know that.
And it wasn't in the minutes the last time. That's why I said this would be another document to show that, but that's fine. We just need to make sure that the secretary puts it, clerk puts it in the minutes. I agree.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Let me make one other suggestion, having read through these a ton of times. The paragraph during the time of expulsion, so on and so forth. Furthermore, student number XYZ shall, we always scratch May and turn it into shall. So can we just change that to shall?
Good point. Thank you. You see where that is? In the same document where we're going to eliminate that last part, seconded by, in the middle. Furthermore, student.
Up, down.
Down.
There you go.
Shall.
Shall instead of may.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, that's fine. Change that, May, to shall, and then eliminate that last part. And let's make doubly sure that we record in the minutes of the open session after coming off the disciplinary hearing of who was seconded by and then whether the motion was passed.
And it's a by-name vote, too.
And it's what?
A by-name vote, too, because I've seen this as this board vote and it says, yea or nay, as if there's a single yea or nay. It's not just whether it passes or fails, it's how each person voted.
Right. Okay, how each person voted. All right. I would say, to make a comment about that, I think it's important that we as a board, when we're in a disciplinary hearing, that as much as possible, we try to get a consensus of the entire board because of what it might communicate to the person that is receiving the discipline and the parents and the other people that may be there. If it, and I know that may take a long time. That's one of the reasons I asked Ms. Bushrod to extend the time that we do this to an hour and a half and not just an hour. But I do think it's, obviously, we can't force anything. Every board member has a choice. But I think as much as possible, if we can make those unanimous or a consensus, it'll communicate better to the family who's receiving the discipline, because if we're divided in that, in a three-two vote, I think it could communicate something that we would rather not have communicated. This is just a suggestion. Obviously, I'm not telling anybody the way they should vote, but I do think we should work as much as we can to build some consensus, no matter how long it takes, so that we can leave the closed session with an agreement. Any other comments about that?
Yes, I'd like to say that we certainly don't want any, especially new board members, to feel any pressure coming out of the closed session. So I don't think we need to make any votes public.
Oh, we're required by law to do that.
I'm sorry.
Required by law to do that.
Yeah, we always vote.
Individual names, that is not required in the statute.
It's a little bit vague, but I'd say that we need it. And I have legal opinion on that if there's disagreement.
Why do we need, you mean that it needs to be recorded who voted which way?
That's what he's saying, yes.
Why?
That's what I'm saying, is we need.
We always do an open session. Record votes. I mean, people elect their representatives and they want to know how they vote on things.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But there's a reason that we are in closed session and it's confidentiality for.
But it's not us.
As well as the board members. Confidentiality works both ways.
Wait, wait, let me get this clear. I think what I hear Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Hock saying is that really all we need to show is whether the motion passed or did not pass. What you are saying, Mr. Rolls, is that we need to actually record how, that it was a three-two or a four-one or a unanimous vote? Is that what you're saying?
And not just the number, but how each person voted.
Literally, how, like how you voted and how she voted and all of us?
Right, that's how we do it in all our other minutes. Right. That's how we do it in all our other minutes.
I-
Okay, it is no different, Gail, than our other actions.
It is different.
It's an open session.
It is different, that's correct. And it's even more confidential.
But it's done in open session.
Yeah.
It's just the vote, we'll vote. We approve the per, right?
When-
Right.
So he's saying-
That, that form?
Yes, that, that form would be read, but it would not indicate the direction of the board members' vote.
Gail, so when we, so make sure we're on the same page. So when we go through this, right, we go through closed session, we return, and in closed session, we discuss the discipline, and we agree in whatever fashion. We return to open session, and then we move to approve the action. And that's no different than any action that we ever voted on otherwise. It's, it's voted in open session. So-
Yeah.
So all he's saying is to list the votes as they are in all of our other-
That we approve the action.
It's like we all approve personnel, and Ms. Rinko writes down.
I understand what you're saying. I'm concerned, again, it's really not going to impact me a whole lot, except from the other side of that podium. But I'm concerned about future board members coming in and not, not feeling comfortable with a vote and being free to make their individual opinion without it being-
Scrutinized.
Yes, scrutinized. Yes. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I understand what Ms. Hock is saying, but I think, well, here's the, all right, moving forward with this, I think you're probably right, Mr. Rolls and Ms. Gonzalez, in that the most important thing is we show what the vote is, and it was either yea or nay. How it would not be wise if we were to vote against whatever we decided in closed session. In open session, we vote against what we decided. That was partially my point. What I was saying is that it would be nice to not have to record, say, a three, two vote, or a four, one vote, in terms of the one receiving the discipline and the family. So all I'm saying is, yes, every board member can vote however they wish in the open session, but as much as possible, I think we need to try to come to a unanimous decision as much as possible in closed session, so that we don't have that type of conflict. That's all.
That, that, let me go back just a moment. In the many discipline hearings that I've been a part of, some of them have been quite contentious and quite, quite difficult. We have had parents who have threatened, who have gotten, we'll do, to put it mildly, et cetera, et cetera. I, I do not agree with, for example, if we vote to expel a student, if three members vote to expel a student, and you have two members who are identified as, as Ms. Hock and Mr. X, then I think you're setting those board members up for intimidation.
Yeah, that was part, that was my point. But let's move forward with this. I'll have a last comment from any board member that may wish to do so. And then right now, we're not really changing anything with this. It's just a matter of how it is expressed in open session. We will take a vote in open session. It will be recorded. I think as much as possible, I think we all agree, let's try to build a consensus as much as possible before we go to open session in the disciplinary hearings. But any last comment, and then we'll move on. Ms. Gonzalez? Ms. Hock? Ms. Hoover? Mr. Rolls?
Mr. Bush, this is in the, the policy. So if we're going to change it, I think does require a vote. Is the only thing we're changing right now, I don't know what the original was, we're just changing made a shall. Is that the only thing?
Yes, and we're doing away with that last, which we, we would have voted for today, but we're going to eliminate that. So basically, from the original document, we're only changing the made a shall. And that last line will not be there.
Okay, so, but this is, I think, so this is, no, this is not in the policy manual online. Is that correct?
This is, this is the outcome of the discipline that we've decided in closed session.
So this is only in internal document? This isn't posted in the policy manual?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'm good with that, then.
All right. So we're all good with it? All right. Let's have, we are making this single change. So let's go ahead and have a motion to make this one change to change made a shall.
I move to approve file BDD C dash F three as amended.
Second.
Seconded, and we'll go, I miss Hock seconded that. All those in favor, signify with saying aye?
Aye.
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 Care votes aye, motion carries, and it is changed. Let's move on. All right, discussion items. If everyone would go to those, and I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of struggle with some of this, my computer, which is wonderful, it's a new computer, but-
With my old computer, I'm struggling to get it.
So, discussion items. All right. The first one is a motion, yeah, motion following disciplinary, we already did that, I am sorry, that's the reason why we're looking at that. Okay. Policy manual updates, oh, the ad hoc committee, I am sorry. All right, discussion item was, if we remember at the last board meeting, in regards to the recommendation of that model policy that the governor gave all of us, and had asked the different boards to possibly discuss it and do something with it. We discussed that we might consider the possibility of an ad hoc committee, and this was suggested by Ms. Hock. So we asked Dr. Boyd if he would to investigate the possibility of that and what it might look like. So Dr. Boyd?
Yeah, so a lot's transpired in the last couple of weeks. If you guys have tuned into probably any news broadcast at this point, you can see that quite a debate is setting itself up. So you've got a lot of Northern Virginia schools falling on one side of the decision, some schools in, in central and southern Virginia falling on the other side of the conversation. I can tell you, in speaking with other superintendents, and, and really, we've kind of talked amongst ourselves in the school board office, I've talked to principals about where we are in King George County, I've spoken to our surrounding superintendents. I can tell you, the consensus right now among superintendents is to sit back and wait. I think a lot's happening. And I think honestly, with the way it's setting itself up, this is going to be a decision that's going to be decided in the court system. I get every indication, in fact, every couple of days or so, you get, you've had Governor Youngkin come out and make a statement, you've had the general, or excuse me, the Commonwealth attorney come out and make a statement, the state superintendent has made a statement. We have pretty much weekly statements from our professional organizations, the School Board Association, VAS. In, in speaking with other superintendents, really the approach right now is kind of just to see how this thing plays out. I think it's going to be a very lengthy and involved conversation. We've talked a little bit about what that may look like here in King George, if we decide to take that route. And, and we've got some concerns. Number one, you know, if we were to go to the committee route, we're a little concerned about the makeup of the committee. Obviously, those that are on the committee would, would, you know, finding out who we would choose to be on the committee would be a big decision. So, so we would, we would probably have to, similar to the same way you do, to, to eliminate bias in research, you'd probably try to seek some input and, and maybe see if you could come up with a random way of, of choosing who would be on the committee, if we wanted to go on that, go that route. I would strongly suggest, in having a few brief conversations with folks at the school board office, that we just take a look, if we go this route, at the exact model policy that, that was offered, both from, you know, both Northam's guidelines and, and Youngkin's guidelines, and take the policies on the merits that they were written, and review them. And the reason I say that is, I think sometimes we get into some deep philosophical debates that, you know, in our society right now, I don't think we're, we're, we're very polarized. And, and I don't know that it's our goal, or, or really, if it's the objective to sway anybody's opinion on, on how they think about certain issues. But I think if we want to get critical about the policy, when we get to that point, just taking a look at that policy line by line, and seeing if we agree with, with what is actually in concrete, as far as that policy is concerned, I think that would guide the committee or guide a decision much better than probably diving deep into philosophical debates. And I, I think that'd be a challenging thing to wrap our arms around. Finally, we talked a little bit about doing something that the Department of Education does quite often. They, they do, they do it with the history standards, they do it with the math standards, they do it with really any major initiative they push out. And they just solicit information from the community. So, so digitally, just send out through our social media formats, or any other formats that we maybe, may have, just an opportunity for anyone, maybe someone that's not elected to be on this committee, if we decide to go to that, go that route, just to have a voice in this conversation and provide some information. You know, this really wouldn't be a two-way conversation, but just giving our community a voice when it comes to anything they'd like to include in this discussion, when we're talking about this policy as it pertains to King George. So again, just to recap, I think the court systems are going to play this out here real soon. If the decision is for us to go, you know, the, the route of the ad hoc committee, the makeup of that committee, the merits of the discussion pertaining to, to the policy, and really just providing a collective voice of our community are some of the major conversations that we've had amongst the leadership in the division.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Before we have any possible discussion on this, just to let everybody know, we should have done at the beginning, the policy that we're referring to at the last meeting, it's the model policy on ensuring the privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in the Virginia public schools, as given by Governor Youngkin and the executive branch in Virginia here. So that was the policy we're referring to, and I'm sorry, we should have named it at the beginning. So, Dr. Boyd, to also, as I understand it, you're saying, number one, let's not necessarily choose an ad hoc committee. Now, let's wait and see what pans out in the courts. Because there are so many divisions that are lying on both sides, and it's clear that it's going to be in the courts for a while. When a decision comes out from some of those court hearings and procedures, then the possibility that we may go to an ad hoc committee could decide, decided at that time. And part of that would be to also solicit any input from the community that we represent. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, I, I think we need, we just need to pay attention to the tea leaves right now. There's a lot going on on a daily basis. But when and if we do decide to make this King George's policy, as it pertains to this topic, and making sure our community has a voice, and making sure that we just dive into this policy on the merits of what's on the paper, and try to not, I don't want to take anyone's voice away, but I, I don't believe that if we get deep into the philosophical discussion, we're going to arrive at a consensus.
All right, that's good. Okay, so right now, position right now is that we wait till we hear more from the courts. Comments from the board?
I agree with that approach.
Mr. Rolls?
Yes, same. I hate to just kick the can down the road. But at the same time, fact of matter is that even when the law came out in 2020, and Senator Northam's administration, his VDUE, we didn't make any changes to our local policies based on that. So there's nothing really to change back. And I think Dr. Boyd's very aware of just the variety of opinions here amongst us and the, and the community, and can do his best to cut that needle for now.
So you agree right now, hold off, let's see what the courts say, and then we-
Well, I'd like to say it that way. I don't want, not so much in the courts, as the will of the people, which, guess what, there's a election in two months. So even if we change something right now, we have a new board come January. Do we really want to go through the emotional energy of us making changes for it to only maybe change in a few months?
I think that's what we're all agreeing, is let's hold off for a period of time. The courts may be one reason to hold off. You're suggesting another reason. We just all agree, though, let's hold off on this before we continue any further discussions. Ms. Hoover?
I agree to, to hold off as well.
Ms. Hock?
I have very mixed feelings about this, because I do feel very strongly about the matter and, and the policy. And I completely agree with Dr. Boyd about not getting down into the philosophical implications of such a policy. And I, I think it's very difficult to not to do that, once you start down that rabbit hole. And it is truly, it's Alice in Wonderland's rabbit hole in many ways. I do, I'm not sure, I, I think the court opinions certainly should influence us, but it certainly should not drive the, or be the determining factor. You know, I, I think at, at the point that this board feels perhaps comfortable moving ahead, then yes, we, we should determine the-
Process.
The, the process, and look for ways to make it as transparent as possible, as practical as possible, and as legal as possible. Satisfying, all three of those is a great task.
Absolutely. If I could add to, I-
Sure, go ahead, Dr. Boyd.
Doc reminded me. I, I do also just want to say, regardless of what guidelines we were under at the time, whether it was Northam, whether it was Youngkin, as the former high school principal, I can tell you, our practice has not changed. We, we have done the same thing for, for many, 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 many years. And it's, it's a, it's a process that considers all that are involved. We make sure that we meet with families, we make sure that we include parents in the conversation. And then we make sure that we, just like, my, my background is in, in special education, I find a lot of similarities in, in trying to, to arrive at accommodations and modifications and things that make the individual comfortable, but, but also plug in well to, to the, to the programs that we have in the school division right now. So that has not changed, that will not change. I don't really even see that changing, obviously unless there's direction from the board. But even if you read through that model policy right now, in practice, that's still very much the approach, of making sure we take, take on these challenges on a case by case basis. And we do what, what is respectful and comfortable for all that are involved.
Thank you, Dr.
My, my only comment to that, Dr. Boyd, is that this policy, in some ways, limits the activities and the effectiveness of counselors and social workers, and perhaps administrators even, and by determining wording that counselors and social workers may or may not use. It's a very restrictive policy that is, can get very, very specific and very practical. So I want us to be clear that, that it's not just a philosophical issue. It's a very specific control over our counselors, which is not appropriate.
As we can already see, this will be a topic that will probably continue in the future. I agree with Dr. Boyd. I also have probably even more years' experience as administrator than Dr. Boyd. And I, again, through all kinds of decisions made by legislatures and everything else, we always did what was most, the best for the student. Let me just say that. And I think we could all agree to that. So let's just see how this, not only plays out in the courts, I agree, that should not be the determining factors about what policies we may or may not institute, follow, or change, but it would be one of the factors. And then also, possibly, if this moves forward a little bit farther, especially if we get some indication that there's some force from our legislatures to do something, we may have to deal with this further. But until that point comes, let's, for the time being, let's table this. And when it does come, I think your suggestion of a committee, Ms. Hock, and getting some transparency from some of our wider community members would be very beneficial. But for the time being, let's, let's move forward and wait and see what happens. All right. If there's nothing else, let's go on to the, hold on, I got to go back to, yeah, yeah. All right, policy manual updates. Well, I'll tell you what, my computer, and I apologize, is not cooperating. All right. I don't have the first one on the board docs. It's all right, it's blank for some reason. I have it here. So we will look on here. The first one is the AF comprehensive plan. Do I have a discussion about that from anybody?
No.
Here it is. I apologize, it finally popped up. All right, any discussion about the AF plan? All right, again, this is either just discussion items. I did have a brief discussion, and I think you might have answered this in an email, Dr. Boyd. And that is, that this concerns, when I look at the underlying portion, this, this concerns changes that will have to be made to the comprehensive plan, which will include the literacy plan, I know which we're all in favor of seeing happen. And so these changes will occur in the twenty-four to twenty-five- And so these changes will occur in the 24 to 25 school year. So there will be definitely changes in our comprehensive plan to include the whole literacy plan within the comprehensive plan, I assume, correct?
Correct, yeah. So we began talking about, and we're using strategic plan and comprehensive plan interchange.
That's fine, yes.
So. At our summer retreat, we began talking about many of the modifications or the accomplishments we've we've had towards the strategic plan. At our supervisors' meeting two weeks ago, we began to revisit our strategic plan and talk about the revisions that. That we would make to the plan. If you guys remember, there's four goals within that plan, and each plan has a champion. Or an individual responsible for updating the objectives in that plan. As we speak right now, those champions are updating their particular sections. And on October 27th, we're going to reconvene as a school board staff to make those adjustments to the strategic plan. And as per policy, just prior to the new year, we update the board on our strategic plan.
One other question regards to that, and somebody else may have another question on the board, but. Is there a cost factor that's going to be related to this implementation of this literacy plan for the next school year? You don't have to say how much or anything, just you anticipate a possible cost.
Yes, yeah, there's a, there's a cost factor, but we began to plan ahead for that, and the state is aware of that as well.
Okay, good.
There's, there's some, there's some, I don't need to go into great detail right now, but there's some, some need for reading specialists and some other curriculum and things of that nature. But we've planned ahead for that, and I think we're making good progress.
So some new positions. All right. All right, any other comments? All right, let's move on. The next one is the BBA School Board Powers and Duties. I have several comments. In fact, let me go ahead and begin simply because I received a phone call about that, and then others may have comments. I know that, I appreciate, Mr. Rolls, that you had written an email. And actually, it was sent to Ms. Ewing, and I have permission to talk about it because she was trying to get an answer of Mr. Rolls and his email. And she ended up calling me on the phone today and said that I could share what I'm about to share with you with the rest of the board. If you look at Policy BBA and you look at those last three bullets where all the major changes are. She said that part of the reason for the specificity of this as compared to the other bullets in this policy. Which are not that specified or that go in that much detail is the reason is, is there was a legislator. That made a pretty big deal out of this and went into great detail. And then he got some other legislators to also agree. And so when it came down to. A VSBA to decide how and where to put this. She was contemplating that, should it be a regulation? Should it be part of a policy? Or should it be part of the food service? Because this all pertains to the supplemental nutrition assistance program. So she agreed that this is specificity that is not like the rest of this policy. So in that regard, when I said, well, I didn't really ask what recommendation, and obviously, it's not her job to give a recommendation, just to tell us the facts. And she reiterated that we, instead of putting it here, we could, number one, possibly generalize it and just simply make some statement about. Following the assistant, the SNAP benefits program developed and provided by the Department of Social Service pursuant to the code and not put the rest. Just simply make that ensure that we're going to do this. That's one that she said. Another one was that if we do that, that maybe we could put the rest of this possibly in a regulation that the superintendent could come up with. And the third one, of course, is to possibly put it into the, what is the food service EF? What's the food service policy EF something? Anyway, that's the third recommendation. So she is just, it sounded like almost just as uncomfortable of us as to keeping it like it is. All right, I will stop. I was, I did ask if I had permission from Ms. Ewing to share that, and so that's what I just did. So comments.
So she's, this is it? I mean, she's not considering any changes as far as where.
No, she suggested one of those three. Either number one is that we could simply make a general statement about ensuring that we follow this.
But I mean, she's not considering putting this information in another policy and another VSBA.
She doesn't have a problem with us not adding it to our policy.
Right, she doesn't get to say what we do, but I mean, I'm.
Oh, no.
First of VSBA doing it, that's.
These are just her thoughts, that's all.
They're not making changes. This is the VSBA recommendation, I guess.
This is just VSBA recommendation, nothing else. Related to, obviously, the legislators and Virginia code. In that, you know, 63 dot two dash eight oh one, yes. But that's all it is. This is her interpretation of that. She said they've had a rather long discussion about this. So I want to listen to the board and what we recommend. I would say it would be one of those three, we make a general statement. Or not make any statement and do a regulation that Dr. Boyd could come up with. Or put it in a food service policy. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I had the opportunity today to speak with Ms. Davis, also spoke with Ms. Davis about. Some of the comments that were made by Mrs. Ewing. She's also in agreement. I can tell you first off upfront, in practice. We do these things, and we have done these things and will continue to do these things as far as making families aware of SNAP benefits, making. Families and students aware of free and reduced meal applications, being sent home. And then at back to school nights, making families aware that these these resources exist. Mrs. Davis was in the same feeling, I think, that the board is, I'm assuming. And we sat down and discussed the commonalities in these three bullets. Of course, there's a whole lot of specificity here that you don't see in the rest of this policy. So between her and I, as a suggestion. We thought putting just one bullet that that had this verbiage. And again, it starts with the board. The school board ensures. That information pertaining to meal assistance is sent home with students and readily available to parents. Which I think covers all three bullets. Without the level of specificity that exists.
And don't mention the specificity anywhere, just put that one bullet.
If it's of the.
Well, that's fine, I'm just.
Yeah, no, well, and what I'm saying is that if, if, if you think it would be better to have this in a regulation. Like I said, we do this in practice now. We'll continue to do this in practice. We've done this in practice. It's good practice. But as far as addressing the desire not to include very specific points on nutrition in a policy that that is really kind of. Up in the clouds when it comes to the overarching duties of the school board. We thought that the verbiage, the school board ensures the information pertaining to meal assistance is sent home with students and readily available to parents, kind of. Covered that in that large encompassing way that these more specific statements do.
All right, board members, thoughts?
I still don't think, I think it's too deep, too much detail to be in here, because this is, like you said, the overarching powers and duties of the school board. And this is the second bullet in BBA. It says sees that the school laws are properly explained, enforced, and observed. Okay, but that's all the law. So there's some new laws, and that falls in that category. And we don't try to cram every single law into this policy. We have other policies to cover it. And so since, in fact, we already have one for food service, I think we should try to find that one, put them, put it all over there.
So you think we should put nothing here, your recommendation, and maybe put something in food service?
Right.
Possibly a regulation or policy?
Well, I mean, regulation is just further detail on something that already exists. I think this, I haven't looked at it yet, but I'm guessing this is stuff that wasn't already in there. So.
Was there anything about the SNAP program that's in the food service policies?
I'm not sure. I was looking right now to see if I could locate that policy.
But anyway, right now, though, as far as this update is concerned, you'd like to see us not put anything.
Right, just wholly move to a different policy that's more applicable.
Especially based on the statement above, that covers basically.
It's already covered.
Even the new laws. All right, other thoughts, board members?
Did we skip you?
Oh, no, I won't forget her.
Okay.
I just, I'm just, I'm sorry, I don't always go in order, you probably.
Oh, that's fine. I'm thinking that I agree, Mr. Rolls, that since it reaches the level of policy. That it might be better placed in the food service policy as opposed to regulation and just leave it there.
That is Policy EF. I just looked it up. It's, it's a very short policy. It says food service management. The superintendent is authorized to develop and implement an efficient and effective food service system for the students and employees of the school division. From time to time, the superintendent shall report to the school board on the financial status of the division's food service operations, period.
So could we add this statement that you and Ms. Davis put together to that policy, and that would make it simple?
So you could add a statement to the current policy in EF?
We certainly can, yeah. So would the board prefer that it be this simple statement?
I think I.
My only concern is that the way that this is written is it's geared towards. Dictating to the school board, the school board ensures. We can write it in a way that says that, you know, that reads that it's a responsibility of food service management, which again, is under the preview of the board. So we can certainly do it that way. Make it easy, right?
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez, haven't heard from you yet.
I'd say the only thing I would say, I mean, I don't have a strong preference one way or the other, but for the purposes of consistency. If we're, I think it was previously mentioned that, you know, we don't quote other laws in this powers and duties. I would say that's not actually true because the bullet above it quotes Virginia, quotes Virginia Code nine point one dash nine fourteen. Requiring that public schools registered with the Department of State Police to receive electronic notice of registration of any sex offenders. So, I mean, there, there are a lot, right? I'm inclined, if the recommendation came from VSBA, to include it in this policy. And quote Virginia State Code, I would be inclined to leave it in there with the code in that simplified fashion, but I don't. I don't have a strong opinion otherwise.
Hoover, you've already said something, but you have something to add? I would, my opinion is that to that simple statement, I kind of agree with Ms. Gonzalez, which is good.
Where?
You didn't have to say that. Anyway, that we have the simple statement as you recommended, and then maybe add some of the specificity. And I would leave that up to you, Dr. Boyd, and maybe you don't need to in the EF policy, or maybe you should, but just simply that simple statement that you said. And not put the rest of this in there. And that would be, read that one more time, your suggestion, that one sentence.
The school board ensures that information pertaining to meal assistance is sent home with students and readily available to parents.
And, okay, and that would be the only thing you'd add, and all the rest would not be here. And I tend to agree with that simple statement, and then leaving it to you would be my suggestion, board members. We can vote on this in a minute as to whether you would add it to the EF policy, or you feel like you wouldn't need to necessarily do that. All right, and I know that's a little bit different than what you're recommending, Mr. Rolls. So you have any further comment?
Yes, I mean, I point taken from Ms. Gonzalez that the bullet above gets kind of specific, so maybe that should go too. I think the reason maybe it's in there is, like, you know, I haven't gone this deep yet on it, but I think it might be just in the same part of the code of Virginia where. It lists essentially ten. Primary duties of the school board, and I think those last few, they for every just kind of weirdly get more specific. So I think it's why it's there. I mean, we could do a bit of research on that, but if that's not the reason why that previous one about sex offenders is in there, then perhaps that should move too.
Okay, thank you to all the school board members. Do I have a motion with this in regards to our discussion?
Isn't it just up for discussion today?
I'm sorry, it is.
Well, I guess what we want to bring back for consideration next time, I need to.
Maybe.
We have like three different ideas.
That's true. Bring it back with just that wording that you gave. And then letting you, meeting with your food service people and maybe others as to whether you want to add anything to the EF policy.
Yes, sir.
We probably should vote on, and we had like three different proposals as far as what we want to bring back for consideration. Because otherwise, it kind of, we're just going to have to debate the three different things next time with only one written in.
I think there's only two. We're going to revise this to the one sentence that Dr. Boyd was recommending. And not put the rest of this. And then the second thing that I was suggesting is that the rest of this, he can look and see if there needs to be any changes to the EF policy and come back at the next meeting. And make that recommendation in a discussion item. But for the action item for next time, it would be just that simple sentence that Dr. Boyd had recommended.
Okay, we can do further research on whether that still makes sense.
All right, so moving on.
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Chair, that this very last paragraph, which is underlined, is not relevant to the three above bullets. It's, it's just an odd.
Oh, yeah.
Editing of this, but that applies to the, what's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, the ninth. Bullet as opposed to the bullet above it. So I just wanted to clarify.
Very, very good observation, Ms. Hulk. All right, board, what was that last set of, that last sentence actually that's underlined?
Yeah, so some clarification on that. If you do look at that ninth bullet every year, and we had some questions from the board about this. So the community knows, every year, we are surveyed, at least annually, the school division to identify critical shortage areas of teachers and administrative personnel. By subject matter. So usually you can pull up, some people call this like the top ten list. Math teachers, science teachers, quite frankly, now in education, most positions are on this list. This is critical shortage areas. Traditionally, that survey has been requested, or that information has been requested from the Virginia Department of Education for a final report. They have now, this year, which is provided in this updated policy, included specialized student support positions. So that last paragraph, which does seem out of place, I agree with Ms. Hawk, is describing what specialized support positions are. So now the state will request from school divisions. Critical shortages in the area of social workers, psychologists, nurses, behavioral analysts. Assistant behavioral analysts and other licensed health and behavioral positions employed in the school division. I think that'll be part of the survey moving forward.
I think the question is, is does this need to, it mentions that in the bullet, it's underlined special student support positions. Does this sentence need to be there? And all it is, is identifying what that means. And if it does.
I think it is a good clarification.
But should it be up with this? I hear what you're saying, but should it be up here?
Yes, it should be up with bullet nine. Yes, with bullet nine, yes.
I think that's a reasonable editorial decision to make, where sometimes you don't want to have all the words there, you just want the. The definition, I mean, the title, which should make somewhat sense in context, but then to get the full details, you don't, in the end, have a definition, which I think that's just a definition at the end, so.
It should be up with this bullet.
I mean, I think it's okay to have a long, dense definition at the end versus trying to shove it all in there. I wouldn't. I have a bigger problem with it just being where it is.
Okay, other thoughts, I, Ms. Gonzalez, you want to leave that where it is as a definition for the specialized support student service?
I would move it up, but I have issues with the punctuation, so I'm not going to give it that.
Well, we'll fix that. Ms. Hoover? Move it, leave it where it is?
I think it makes sense to move it up, yes.
I think I agree, it makes sense.
I don't care that much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rolls.
It is, I agree with Ms. Gonzalez, the punk, it would make the punctuation difficult, because if you, if you read the, if you read the way the policy is written. Every bullet or every statement ends with a semicolon or an and or an or.
Get rid of the semicolons, they're unnecessary.
Get rid of them entirely?
All of them.
Okay, and then just kind of.
Make it a sub-bullet.
Make it a sub-bullet.
That's what I was thinking, is make it a sub-bullet under bullet nine.
And I do feel strongly about this.
Yeah, make that a sub-bullet.
So we just tack that definition at the end of that bullet? It's just, okay, now we said that, now this is what it means.
Sub-bullet, yes, a sub-bullet.
No, the bullets are, these are school board responsibilities. And if we, I don't think a definition gets its own bullet. I mean, that's like not another.
Well, no, it's under, it's defining what specialized student supports positions mean.
Right.
So why wouldn't it be?
Bullets are duties, like, so I think you could, if you wanted to put the definition up there, you could just tack it on at the end of that. You know, bullet, just say, now we settled that, we're going to go back and define what specialized student support positions are.
I have a solution.
Or we can just leave it.
Is that an asterisk? And make it a note at the bottom.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Besides the support positions and.
An asterisk after it in the bullet.
Right.
Specialized student support positions, put an asterisk.
Put an asterisk after.
After, yep, in that bullet, and then at the bottom where it is, put an asterisk.
Asterisk in front of it, just like you do in a paper that you're presenting.
Okay, so as a, you're saying it's a scriptural discussion is, and look, it's attracting from. You know, because we talk about the changes, you know, from VSBA, that's part of going through review, but it's also part of, you know, the requirement to do a. Five year review of all the policies, make sure we see them all, because it's, it's not like you show up at day one of this job, and you know them all, there's hundreds of policies. It's an overwhelming number. So it's good, I mean, this is, this may be one of the absolute most important policies that we have. So I think it's good to stop here for a moment and kind of talk about all of it, rather than just the changes, just review what already is here. Man, it was good to kind of recognize a lot of these things, because I told you before when I went into that SBMA training. There was an excellent presentation about school board powers and duties. And, I mean, it was good to get the jumpstart from the VSBA. They sent us the new school board member handbook when we first got elected. They sent us the new school board member handbook when we first got elected, which we basically talked about the three things that we've talked about, you know, before. And you know, there's more than three bullets here, which I think is important to know. So I'd like to just draw attention to a couple of them. Uh, so the third one is, you know, school board secures by visitation or otherwise as full information as possible about the conduct of public schools in the school division, takes care that they are conducted according to the law and with the utmost efficiency. So, yeah, I don't think we should feel like we're imposing by trying to get, you know, full information about what's going on in the schools. It's our, one of our core duties is listed here. We can't really function well without that. And then dropping down, let me count, three, four, five, six, starting with insofar. Says insofar is not inconsistent with the state statutes and regulations. The Board of Education operates and maintains the public schools in the school division and determines the length of the school term, studies to be pursued, the method of teaching and government to be employed in the schools. So that's a lot more granularity that I think we're used to hearing. I mean, that, that's actually cutting right to curriculum. And I guess there was a question mark for my head when I first got on the board about what do we do with curriculum? And there were some suggesting that that's not our job, but, you know, here it clearly says it is our job. So let's, I'll talk about that, I think, more during board comments about some thoughts about that, and making sure that we are carrying out that duty that's specified right here. Uh, and I guess it's kind of appropriate right now, because you're talking about the policy and whether we're following it. So, yeah, I think, you know, public probably very much does want to entrust us, since they liked us, to make sure that curriculum is of high quality and also reflects their values. And we can do that much better. Not that we're more qualified, but we actually, the public is to choose us. So they have more control over who sits in these seats than any other people in the division. So it's important that we carry that out. And, um, and I think, you know, in the time I've been on the board, I haven't seen once that we've talked about curriculum or textbook selection, even though, um, saw policy I A A, I I A A, I believe it is, textbook selecting textbooks. And we've never been asked to approve those. And is that, is it because none have been, no nuance have happened since I've been on the board?
We're getting ready to. Yeah, so, um, last year.
Isn't that on the agenda, or?
Well, as, as far as textbook adoption is concerned, we're coming up on a big year. Last year was just physical education, was the only textbook adoption that we were responsible for last year, and we decided not to adopt. So we didn't change our, our text for physical education. We are, however, coming up on history, uh, textbook adoption and mathematics textbook adoption. Uh, so it, it will be a big conversation. It'll, it'll be one that, uh, typically we solicit a lot of public feedback. Uh, what we, what we've done in the past, uh, is every publisher that, uh, we decide to solicit information from will give us sample copies of, of their collection of textbooks. We post those throughout the community, we've had them in the school board office, I think Smoot Library, I think at the schools, uh, to give everyone an opportunity to review those textbooks. Uh, there's a committee that, that, uh, reviews some of that material. Uh, and then we, based on all of that information, we come before the school board and discuss, uh, our considerations for textbooks. So we've had, we've had, uh, really kind of a year of, of light textbook considerations, but we're getting into a heavier time.
Okay. And so I think just in general, as a result of reviewing this, and I also recently had a, uh, S P M A training specifically dedicated to curriculum. And, um, so I think it'd be really good if we could get a presentation before too long about how we manage curriculum here in King George. I mean, I guess one option is that it's totally delegated. And even if that's the case, I think it's still good for us to have insight into, uh, how it's done and make that decision consciously. Does that sound like, well, like, you'd want to have before long?
Well, that's, I think that's a discussion that we could possibly have at another board meeting in terms of, you know, what do we do as far as curriculum? Because I do think in the strategic plan, that there is quite a discussion of curriculum. Um, I'm, I'm not quite sure what you, what you want, except that you want to have further scrutiny in terms of, um, how we decide curriculum and how we implement it, is that what you're saying?
I don't know just yet, I think just the first step, I just want to start with that. And I, I had sat down with Mrs. Hill before I actually took office after my election, just to try to understand curriculum. And I still don't quite have my brain wrapped around it. So just to have, uh, presentation perhaps from Mrs. Hill as supervisor curriculum, just tell us about how curriculum functions in the division.
Okay, maybe, uh, some future board meeting, maybe before the end of the year, Dr. Boyd, have Ms. Hill discuss, the, uh, procedures and policies related to, um, making decisions about curriculum. All right, let's move on with this. So we've just got those two changes, we're going to change the definition and put that as a asterisk and keep it at the bottom. And then, um, also the, um, one sentence, um, and do away with the rest of the, um.
Hey, Mr. Bush, one final thing, if I may.
All right.
There's a bullet that, uh, starts towards the bottom before the new stuff, says, starts with the word surveys. I think there was an email traffic about this, but just to clarify, uh, Dr. Boyd, textbook services, at least annually being done to identify critical shortage areas of teachers, and that it's the school board's responsibility, but that we may ask the superintendent to conduct it. Uh, so do you understand to have a standard request from us to conduct those surveys? Or do you require?
We typically receive this survey from, from the state. Um, I, I want to believe that in the past, that probably sufficed, um, for the board as far as what our critical shortage areas were. Um, if, obviously if there's some other way that, that you'd be interested in receiving that information, I think I sent you guys today in an email. Um, it's a pretty formal process that the state follows.
You did.
Uh, as far as identifying critical shortage areas, we've had a lot of informal conversations. We talk a whole lot about where we are with staffing. Um, if there's additional information you think you need from that, then, you know, I'm all ears. Um, but I'm hoping what we do right now is suffices.
Okay, yeah, that's, to clarify my question, it's not, um, that I want different information. It's just saying that this is the school board's responsibility, or we request the superintendent to it, and I request that you do it. I don't know if you need to hear that, um.
I think this is also discussed in C B A, we're going to come to in just a second, about the survey.
Is that C B A as well? I think it may be repeated there, because it changed some of the same verbiage.
So let's, let's move on with this one, and let's go to the next, uh, next one, if it's all right with the board. We finished with B B A, and the next one is B H B, Board Member In-Service Activities. That's about the FOIA and the COIA. Any, um, discussions or concerns about B H B? Basically, all they made, just two small changes, they crossed out years and.
Placed it with years.
Yeah, they put years. What did they do? What in the world?
I, I didn't understand that.
Calendar years, they crossed it out, and they put years again, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, so that remains the same, and then just left off the elected and just put school board members. And then the policy at the bottom, the legal reference was changed, otherwise there's no other changes to that. Any other discussion about that one? All right, let's move on to C B A qualifications and duties for the superintendent. Discussions, this one particularly, they got a, um, a lot underlined towards the bottom, when it says superintendent oversees staff personnel management included by, and then there's several bullets, and one bullet has been clearly added.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I suggest we handle the random specialized student support position paragraph in the same fashion we did in the other one.
I was thinking the same thing. Put another definition asterisk.
Yeah.
And do exactly the same thing you did in the other one. You know, why do we duplicate things like this? It's identical to the other one.
Yeah.
It's okay, it is, and that's fine, just, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do have a question about, um, on the first page of the policy.
Okay.
With the section starting with as the educational leader of the school division, the superintendent, yada, yada, uh, bullet three says develops for approval by the school board procedures for adopting textbooks and other instructional materials.
Right.
So I understand that policy I I A A maybe partially covers that, but superintendent doesn't write policy, so, and this is a major duties of the superintendent, so is there anything else that exists in terms of procedures for adopting textbooks besides that policy?
Really, just what I described a minute ago, we, we follow the state, uh, cycle for textbook adoption, adoption when it comes to different subject matters. Uh, so again, we're coming up on a heavy year of, of history and, and math textbook adoption. We solicit information from the publishers on the available textbooks that are out there. We receive, uh, sample copies from all of those textbook, um, large textbook distributors. We put all of that content and, and textbook material on display throughout the community, solicit feedback, uh, have a, have a committee to review that feedback, uh, and then come before the board with the recommendation. And, uh, Ms. Hildebrand at the school board office has overseen this for a number of years.
Okay, so it says develops for approval by the school board members, uh, procedures. So are you saying our approval is what resulted in that policy I I A A? So that is the full procedure as it's written? I'm just looking for where it's written down.
I, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was your question?
He was just getting some clarification on, um, the, it's not part of the updates. He was just asking a question about, um, the third, the second set of bullets under major duties.
And, but what was the last question you asked?
Okay, so, you know, it says that the superintendent develops approval for the school procedures for adopting textbooks and other instructional materials. So I'm just wondering where those procedures are written and recorded so that we can see them? Or if those procedures are just basically all got rolled into that policy I I A A? And if that's the entirety of our written procedure with respect to textbooks?
And I spoke with Ms. Hildebrand today, we reviewed that policy I I A, which is textbook, uh, adoption, I think, is the policy or.
Selection, adoption, and purchase.
Selection, adoption, and purchase of textbooks. And, uh, it's a pretty lengthy policy that goes through kind of the, the procedures that we follow for textbook adoption.
All right, that's good, thank you. I have a question, but before I give mine, any other questions about this policy? I just have one simple one, and just in, in one of the, the updates at the bottom where it begins with annual, in the bullet, annually designated a division employee as division safety, um, official, whose duty, so we have a, a division safety official, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make.
Here in attendance.
All right, well, that's what I was going to ask, it, you know, you may have already mentioned that before. And so basically, he's following this policy, right?
Correct.
All right, now I might.
Mr. Chair, can you say again where you're looking right now?
I'm sorry, it's the, uh, the last, no, not the last, the, uh, beginning with the superintendent oversees staff personnel management included by, and it's almost of that underlined portion, it's the last bullet of that section, begins with annually designating a division. And I just wanted to make sure who that division safety, um, official was.
Yeah.
And, um.
Mr. Chair, I just have a, a final comment is all. I look at this long list, and I just think, like, wow, that's a lot, so I appreciate.
That's why I said, does he do all this?
It takes a team, and I've got a good one, so, uh, certainly try to get the job done, but it is big on some days.
Yeah, it is, that's true. All right, any other questions about this one? All right, let's move on. The next one is the, um, appointment, um, C B B, appointment and term of superintendent. Any? Any questions there about this update, which is not much? C B B, all it really is, is at the bottom, made some legal reference changes, and I don't see anything else as I looked at this earlier today. So no questions, we'll go on to the next one, D B, the annual budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I might offer for the tobacco file, C B B. It has references at the bottom, cross-references, C B A, C B D, C B G evaluations of the superintendent. Do we need philosophical question?
Back to the C.
Yeah, the, the superintendent one, do we need to add our, like, the file that we created?
You made?
Yeah, I don't know, Dr. Boyd, what do you think?
Then we can.
I think that would certainly make it ours.
Okay.
I mean, this is appointment in terms of superintendent, we didn't affect that, did we? We just, just the evaluation, or which was it?
Correct, but it has a reference at the bottom for evaluations of the superintendent? I don't know, maybe, we might not need it, it was just a thought. Um, school board is appointed this.
Yeah, the C B G, it uses that as one of the reference points on page two.
We, we just changed that policy ourselves, and we need to reflect any changes we had.
Well, we made a.
We put a file under the C B G, right?
File, I had it pulled up, um.
I believe you did, we added a file under C B G and the procedures.
C B G F, yeah, we made an evaluation, it, it's probably fine.
It's just a file, Ms. Gonzalez, I don't know if.
We probably don't need it.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think we really need it. All right, back to D B. It looks like they've changed, uh, instead of ten days in advance, it's going to be seven days advanced for the public hearing, which, you know, here to there. Any question about that?
I didn't check, so that evidently must have been a law change that didn't change the legal references somehow at the end.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It must have been a law change, but curiously, there's no change in the legal references at the end.
Yeah, I'm wondering why it changed also, where they got this from, since there's no reference changes.
The, um.
Probably.
It says policy updated to reflect amendment of Virginia Code by House Bill twenty-one sixty-one and Senate Bill eleven fifty-one. So the code, there must be an amendment to the code reference, but it wouldn't be reflected in our policy.
Yeah, I think you're probably right.
Still in the same code.
But the code itself is different.
Code itself was updated. All right, moving on, those are minor things, the, um, E B B, the threat assessment teams. Questions, concerns? I guess I have one where it says the first underlined part in the E B B, when it says new threat assessment team members completed initial threat assessment training, um, this talks about a new threat assessment team. I guess I just want to understand that, um, that means that every three years, then there's a new team and they're trained again, or what?
No, this, this is new threat assessment team members. So, uh, every threat assessment team at each school is typically made up of administration, counseling, school resource officer, social worker, teachers that are involved. So that a threat, threat assessment team does change over the years with teachers that are, individuals on that team that leave. It's not training for the entire threat assessment team, it's training for the members of the threat assessment team. And actually, uh, the Department of Juvenile Justice does a very good job of offering these trainings annually. Uh, so there's, there's a ton of training for, uh, threat assessment team members.
I'm guessing that, that was already been done even before it was specified in this policy.
All right, what was the, so before that, it was just simply resource officer to play at least one school. Okay, so they added this just to make sure it's being done. All right, any other comments on this particular policy? All right, let's go on to, um, I G B I dash R, Advanced Placement Classes and Special Programs. All right, there's a lot here.
Yeah.
Do you have any comment about this, Dr. Boyd, on I G B I dash R, the, it's a, uh, regulation?
No, the, the only thing I would maybe consider in the new underlined verbiage is to remove the International Baccalaureate Program, as we currently do not have that in King George County. So, uh, possibly removing that, but we do have, um, the other programs that are listed there.
I highlighted that, having been involved with the I B program for so many years, it is just an, you know, I think I've already mentioned this publicly before, I know it's expensive, but, um, it is a very valuable program. And not to diminish the A P program, that's a good one too, but the I B goes into far more, and it's accepted by, um, more universities throughout the world than the A P programs are. But that's just a comment, it's not that we need to make any changes, except that possibly in the next year or so, I'd like us to look at the, um, I B program, because it is extremely valuable in terms of, uh, students, um, getting scholarships and everything else.
Yes, we, we did re, uh, review, came very close to accepting the I B, uh, program, but it is extremely expensive, both in terms of staff, because the staff have to be very specialized and, and, um, in terms of, um, making sure that we cover all the needs of the students involved in that, and that gets into a lot of very specific, uh, academic areas.
Right, I know, yeah. Again, I was very involved with the program, especially in terms of the, which has been mentioned several times, part of the program for the I B is a hundred and sixty hours required community service that has to be documented and approved. Um, but that's one small portion. And then also the idea that you can take individual, we don't need to get into individual class, I'll say to one comment, you can take individual classes with the I B program, you don't have to be in the full diploma. Uh, but it is very expensive, you are absolutely right, Ms. Hulk, and that's the reason why many public schools in the United States don't, don't implement it. All right, um, invocation protocol, um, I believe. invocation protocol, I believe, Mr. Rolls, you're the one that wanted this as a possible discussion item?
Correct, and apologies, this was going to be in the pack, but inadvertently just got left out. And actually, this printout here is the original version, so I just emailed you at the beginning of this meeting, if you check your email, it's the revised version, so please go to your email and look at it there. And then once you have it open, you scroll down all the way to the bottom, that's where I just added it as the next protocol in the protocol section to cover the invocation.
You're gonna have to give us, give us a second, Mr. Rolls.
Just let me know when you're there. Yeah, so scroll way to the bottom.
Oh goodness, I don't, I don't have access, I don't have any, hold on, I've got to-
Rolls, I'm confused as to what you sent us, this is in the governance norms and protocols, is there a specific, before?
I just added it as another protocol at the very bottom.
Thank you.
To cover how we're gonna handle the invocation. So, does everybody get it now then?
Alright.
I have a question, um, this seems to me more like a meeting protocol than a board protocol. So I don't necessarily agree that it needs to be in the board norms and protocols, because the, this, they dictate how we, uh, you know, our roles, how we communicate with each other, so on and so forth, not how we run the meetings? So I don't know that it's appropriate in the norms and protocols.
I guess I was thinking it's a bit more detailed than we usually go into in policies, so the protocol, this document would allow us the flexibility to go into more detail.
I disagree that it's more detailed than we go to in other policies, I mean, like our, for example, the superintendent evaluation file that we'll file today, that's quite a bit of detail.
Yeah, it's a file, so you, you just would prefer that this information get moved to the meeting policy, is what you're saying?
Or something, I just don't, I don't agree that it's a, that it's a board protocol, because it has more to do with meeting-
I'm more interested in the substance, but yeah, certainly, let's talk about where it goes.
Well, why does it, why do you feel we have to have a policy?
Okay, well, so right now, we don't, we just said we're having invocation, we didn't see anything about how it gets done, and I think having a little more specificity there is important. Because I, I think it's very valuable to include the community as much as possible in the, the school division to have, so we can just have that involvement, that connection, I think is very important to advancing education, just being, operating well as a division. And also, I, right now, it's just one person being appointed, I guess effectively we're standing by the, by the chair, but we're all elected and we're to represent our constituents. And so I think that's best done if we were to take turns organizing the invocation. So yeah, I'm just giving the overview right now, that'll read it in detail, so we just rotate through, we can, my preference is that we invite community members kind of lead the invocation, uh, which we don't have to do, so here is, if we take turns organizing it, and then the organizing member would have a choice to invite somebody, give the invocation themselves, or just decline to have an invocation at all, if that's your preference. But let me just read it, instead of just talking at high level, so just to give some more organization to this, it would be, it reads, "School board members will plan the invocation for each meeting on a rotating basis in the following order." And orders really matter, I just basically did alphabetical just to have one, so first-at-large member, Doggeran member, James Madison member, James Monroe member, Shiloh member. The organizing member may either, one, invite a guest who either lives or works in King George to give the invocation, two, give the invocation themselves, or three, decline to have an invocation. And yeah, so for, for two, I said the person has to live in King George or work here, I think it's important that they be part of a community to come and participate in this way. But then continuing on, it says, "The organizing member will communicate their choice to the chair at least one week in advance of the meeting, or else the chair is free to plan its, the, the invocation as they see fit." If the organizing member invites a guest, they will provide the guest's name to the chair for inclusion in the agenda. Furthermore, if a guest is invited, the chair will allow the organizing member to briefly introduce their guest prior to the invocation. The chair will ensure it's clear who's, at whose invitation the guest is participating in the meeting. So, I mean, any comments on the content or the basic idea there?
Thoughts?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I have, I guess, two, one question, Mr. Rolls, is your intent for the number three option to decline to have an invocation? Would that mean if a member were to decline that, that that meeting would not open with an invocation at all, is that the intent of that one?
Yes, I mean, because if it's your turn to do the invocation, I could force you to do something if you don't want to.
Okay, um, so I, as you know, I did not vote in favor of including an invocation, that being said, I, I'm not, I would prefer if we are going to do invocations, that we limit it to board members and not invite external guests.
Okay, I'll say I disagree, but, okay.
Your thoughts, Ms. Hulk?
I, I tend to agree with Ms. Gonzalez, and want to thank you for including the option to decline, because not every board member has the desire to have an invocation. I'd also like to know what other counties and cities do in the state of Virginia, and, and whether they have invocation policies. I think it would be good to be consistent across the state possibly. I, I, I think, um, we're, we're trying to ensure, as board members, we're trying to ensure the quality of education of students, and, um, frankly, that old adage that, you know, there'll always be prayers in school as long as there are exams, um, I, I think still holds, and the fact is that that's a private process. So, uh, I guess that's, that's my statement, that I would prefer that it be a private process, but, um, I also just want to make sure that it, that any invocation represents all cultures and religions in our county, and we, we have many represented in this county.
Sure.
I did vote to have the invocation, and I thought that part of the conversation was that we could have all, represent all members of the community, and part of you inviting somebody could be part of that, so to invite community members to give the invocation would then fulfill that, but, um, I agree with Mr. Rolls that we should be able to invite community members.
To simplify this, why don't we, just an idea, have, have all of the board members, when they would like to invite someone from, I agree that, hopefully we'll all agree that they should be representative of the county here, not necessarily somewhere else. But have board members submit names that they would like to invite to do the invocation, and submit them to the board chair, whoever that is. And then on, let the board chair divide that up as to what that would look like over a period of months, or if, in other words, if we get, if you recommend somebody, and you recommend two people, whatever, it's very easy for the board chair to organize that, and to using all these recommendations, but simply put it into this, this board meeting will be this person recommended by Ms. Gonzalez, this one, it'll be another one recommended by Ms. Rolls, Mr. Rolls, and so on. And, and then that leaves the opportunity is that you may want to lead the prayer yourself, or you may want to recommend somebody, or you may not want to recommend anybody. But let that be received by the board chair, and then simply, I would send that, the board chair would send out, taking everybody's input into consideration, a schedule of to, who would be leading the invocation, and at what board meeting. Just simplifies it, that's all, and still takes into account all the board members having input. And also inviting, and I will make sure, so far, there's only been two, and they've been from two Christian churches, that's true, totally different Christian churches, but it's been two. And we can be sure that there's, you know, Catholics, and if there's any Muslims, that they would come and so on, I know that's what you were concerned with. Jewish, yes, and invite them, we can't force them, of course, but then having input from your contacts as individual board members that you may have. I'm just trying to simplify this rather than complicate it more, is everybody would send input to the board chair, and then I would send out a schedule as to who would be giving the invocation, and at what board meeting. Thoughts?
Man, I think we're all elected, so I think it's, it's good for us each to have a, a turn versus putting so much in one person, but you know, maybe we really think that-
It's not that hard.
We, we trust you, but, um- But then it's also on, on us to do the work to, is rotate to invite the person, and it's less-
Yeah, you'd have to depend, and I would do that, but I mean, if I don't get anything from Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. Hulk gives two recommendations, you know, I would try to rotate it, I would use one of hers, and then yours, and then Ms. Hoover's, then mine. And then the second one from Ms. Hulk, and so on, yeah, not that hard to do, it's 10 minutes work.
I just, I think there's less, you know, risk of conflict if there's, if someone feels like their choices aren't being selected, if you just rotate, just, you know, I think, I find that simpler.
Okay, I'm just trying to, as Ms. Gonzalez said, there may be, or Ms. Hulk, I can't remember which one said it, that there may be a, a feeling that they don't want to recommend anybody, or they don't want to have anybody-
Right, and that's fine.
And then that's fine, then they wouldn't, but then I would still do the rotation. Yeah. I'm just trying to simplify it, and I don't think it needs to be a policy, but, so what does the board feel?
So I'm not totally clear what you're saying though, it, it, so there, is there any related rotation, or we just submit and you pick whatever, the chair just picks whatever?
As you would submit names of people, I would also probably, you know, you can say I've already contacted them, and then I would tell them, or you, whoever's submitting a name, that this is the next open date, and then you can contact them, or I would to be here, that's it.
But you say, talking like me, but how do you know which board member, are you just picking who you want to?
You send me an email, I'll know it's from you.
But I mean, there's four of us, so how do you, how are you picking who's?
Well, just do a rotation, you know, I've just done the last two, so as soon as I get an email from, say, Ms. Hulk, well, then she can be the next one. Well, then, if I get an email from Ms. Hoover, she would be the next one, and so on.
So it's random versus having like a fixed rotation?
Yeah, because you may not think of anybody, or you may be a couple of months before you can think of somebody, and that's fine. And you may think of two people, and then we'll go to one, and as it comes around, then you'll get the second choice. I'm trying to make it easy, Mr. Rolls, maybe it's sounding more complicated, I don't know.
Mr. Bush, I will take next month, next meeting.
Yeah, you, you mentioned have a variety, and so by taking choices, yeah, obviously you can invite whoever you want then, so if you want to see some, like a Jewish rabbi, then, then you can do that, right?
So just send me, Ms. Hulk's agreed to do that one, so that's fine, you know, she'll take the next meeting, and someone will be here, and you can invite them, but let me know, and we can be sure to put it on, possibly put it on the agenda, I didn't put the name-
So it sounds like an unwritten protocol, I don't know why we, why we'd be resistant to actually just clarifying things versus having, I mean, it's, it's fine for now while we're aboard, but then as board changes, it's good to-
How do we see how this works before we start to put it into any policy or protocol? So basically, we'll do it, Ms., what, I think what you're saying, and Ms. Hulk has already suggested she'll do the next one, and then you send me an email if you have somebody in mind, and then you'll be the next one, after Ms. Hulk.
Yeah, sure, we can, I mean, I'll see, I, I propose this, but, um, we could just let it go for now.
Alright, well, let's, one more comment, and then we'll move forward, any last comment, Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Hulk, any last comment? Ms. Hoover? Okay, so we're gonna move forward with basically not necessarily putting anything in policy yet, not saying we won't in the future, but Ms. Hulk will have the next invocation invitee, and then if any, Mr. Rolls or Ms. Hoover suggests one, then that will be the next one, and if we don't, then I'll have one after that and so on, or Ms. Gonzalez. Let's do this for a while and see what happens, and if it's confusing, then we'll come up with some more clarification. Alright, let's move on.
Look, let's clarify our next school board meeting, how about that?
When is the next school board meeting?
November 18?
Correct, I believe that's correct, you want to make sure you don't forget.
I know, yes, that's exactly-
That'd be a good idea, and again, let me know through an email.
I will.
Okay. Alright, um, committee reports, let's start with Mr. Rolls.
I do not have any.
I do not have any.
Do not have any.
Nor do I.
Well, I have one from the lab school, um, I, that's kind of my new, I guess, committee, besides the special ed. And, um, Dr. Boyd and I attended the first meeting of this new lab school, and it's kind of exciting, there was representatives from the, was it all five or four of the five, I think, were there? Either the superintendent or one of the board members that was chosen, excuse me, to be on the committee. And there was a lot of presentation by Ms. Tow, Dr. Rebecca Towery. Towery. And, um, she, um, she's got the big picture down very well, I'll be honest with you, it's very exciting, we looked at the facility that's being given to, to us by, um, Mary Washington there in Stafford. And it's a beautiful facility, but they gotta do a tremendous amount of renovations, it's gonna open up next year, it's not this year, it's the 24, 25 school year. And, um, she, there's a lot to be done before then, basically, they're gonna start even looking at the process of choosing what students would be there in November, they're gonna start looking at hiring teachers beginning in December, January, and then they're gonna have an assistant principal that will be there, Mr., Dr. Towery will be the, basically, the, the, the principal or the director administrator in charge. And, um, there's a lot of assistance by Mary Washington University, and it's really good, there'd be any partnering, not only with Mary Washington and a lot of the teacher ed program, but they're also gonna be partnering with the community, and doing a whole lot of hands-on teaching. I think that's a part of the reason why they call it the lab school, it's literally gonna be more hands-on, bringing people in from the community, partnering with businesses, having instructors and professors that are right there, having some of these, these students that will actually join the classes there at the university, um, so it's a, it's a whole different concept. So I'll stop there, and ask Dr. Boyd if he wants to add anything.
No, I was, it's also very exciting, I think there's a lot of, um, excitement on the horizon when it comes to the lab school, I think all the school divisions are beginning to learn really what it means. Like Mr. Bush said, the, the big picture is very clearly laid out, I think it's a wonderful partnership between the school divisions that are participating, and also University of Mary Washington, who is going to not only provide the facility, which is a beautiful facility, but there's also a partnership with their teacher education program, and providing some professors for, for the lab school, so I, I think if it all comes together nicely, there is a lot, I agree with Mr. Bush, there's a lot to do between now and the beginning of the 24, 25 school year, but it sounds like it has a lot of promise, I think it'll serve a, a portion of our student body very well. It will be a lottery as far as enrollment in, into the lab school, so all students will be eligible to fill out an application, and they'll be chosen through, through a lottery system. Uh, and it'll be very similar to Commonwealth Governor's School or Chesapeake Bay Governor's School as far as how we join students from other school divisions and, and learn together, so I think it's, it sounds very exciting, and I look forward to how it develops.
And maybe one last thing, is there is a grant that will pay for most of the first year, uh, but then after that, obviously, we're gonna be into it for possibly, um, you know, what we receive for each individual student that'll be participating. I'm assuming that we'll have to obviously give that to run the lab school, but the first year is gonna be covered by a grant along with all the renovations. And if you, any of you on the board have an opportunity to visit this facility, Dr. Boyd or myself can give you some instructions, and we'll tell Dr. Towery that, if you'd like to see it, because it, again, the area that they, um, that they've been given is tremendous. In fact, they have a skylight that's as big as this whole ceiling in this room right here, and it's very well designed. And also, it has a lot of open areas that they're gonna be able to do a lot of lab-type activities, which is also very good, alright.
So it's, it's pretty much turning key ready right now, or is there still?
No, just the opposite, you couldn't be farther from the truth, um, no, they have to do major renovations to this facility inside, they're not gonna renovate anything outside. They're gonna remove walls and add walls, and, um, you know, change classrooms around and-
We can look now, but it's gonna look real different very soon.
No, but you'd be able to see the way it is right now, is a beautiful, um, you know, obviously, they're not gonna change the skylights and the stair system and the way that they, the foyer and all those things, it's very, it's very well laid out. You know, with classrooms kind of in a U shape around this big foyer area, and a second floor, and bottom floors for admin- and a second floor and bottom floors for administration and lots of classrooms. But again, they're going to be combining classrooms, removing walls, adding walls and so on. So it's a she talked about so many things that there was no, we didn't write them all down. It was impossible. My guess is it will be, I don't even want to guess at the amount of funds, but it's most of it's from a grant to do all this renovation. So she's starting pretty quick and she feels as though she'll be ready for the next school year.
Okay. Just one question. Dr. Boyd mentioned the lottery system and then if the governor's school, obviously, there's an application process, there's you got to show the aptitude for it, so that there's no aptitude test for last school.
Okay, again, remember that a lot of this is at the visionary still stage. And I think a lot of these details are going to be hashed out. Dr. Boyd and I talked a lot about some things that weren't even discussed. Because if they use the lottery system, well, you could have special education maybe involved. There's all kinds of details and my guess is some of the vision may even shift a little bit, Mr. Rolls, from what they're he she's originally envisioning, where it may end up being an application process. But at this moment, it's called a lottery. We'll see what that means. She didn't define what that meant exactly. She did say, obviously, sorry, we didn't mention this, it is starting and they're looking at eighth grade students now. So next year, they're going to start with only the ninth grade. So this is a progression year by year. Next year, it'll be only ninth grade. Year after that, ninth and 10th and so on. So this year, they'll be looking at eighth graders when they begin the lottery. All right. Sorry, lots with that, but when something new like that develops and it's exciting, there's a lot to talk about. All right, moving on, superintendent's report.
Do you have any reports?
I think I do.
Oh, yeah.
I think I checked.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I may have missed him, so it's okay to check me.
All right, so the Virginia General Assembly convened in special session today so to address the revisions to the 2022-2024 biennial budget. Happy to report that, yes, it is September, but there will be an increase in state support for public education of about $645 million. So a couple highlights, and that's not that's not King George money, that's 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 money across the state. The state did add the money to the or intends to add the money to the general fund for the 2% salary increase. If you remember, they they provided the 5% raise, but we were hoping for the 7%. This is the inclusion of to get us up to that 7%. There's a lot of other areas where the funds break down. I won't go through all the all of those areas right now. I think what's important at at this junction is that in the coming days, it'll be on the governor's desk for approval. Once, once the governor approves, which I think we have every indication that he intends to. Then the school divisions will be given an updated calc sheet. A calc sheet again is calculus, really. It's it's a Excel spreadsheet that considers our enrollment and considers all of our funding sources. And now with this new revenue source, we'll we'll plug in our numbers to that calc sheet again, and it'll give us an idea of how much additional funds King George County will receive based on the revisions to to the biennial budget. So that's exciting. In the coming days, as this develops, I'll be sure to keep the board in the loop on what this looks like for the King George County school budget. I would say you know, this is all news today, but this potentially could give us an opportunity to revisit some of the things that we weren't able to address in the budget this year. And also take a look at our strategic plan and see if there's anything in there that we need to satisfy moving forward now that we've started the school year. So those will be our focuses as as we do have this additional source of revenue. Outside of that, I wanted to make sure the board is aware, working with Ms. Higgins, we do now have on September 20th have what we're calling the King George County Schools in the Community Breakfast. This will be at the University of Mary Washington in Dahlgren. And what it's going to be is really our opportunity to reach out to business leaders, faith leaders, community leaders. We have sent out a list of invitations. This is something we've done in the past. If you guys have anybody that you'd also like us to invite to this, feel free to reach out to Ms. Higgins and we'll include them on the invitation. And this will be right around the time. If I back up two days, on the 18th of September, we will have our next board meeting where we will be able to share accreditation results with the board. Ms. Hildebrand will do that. And then what we'll do is roll right into our community outreach, talk about our accreditation and talk about what that means moving forward as far as initiatives and plans for this school year, next budget cycle and and other things that will help us attack some of the things that we have in our strategic plan moving forward. So that'll be on the 20th, King George County Schools in the Community Breakfast at UMW. And then also we have our first King George County Schools Town Hall Forum. And we will have that at Smoot Library on November 6th. So again, what we're trying to do last year, if you remember, we had in a very condensed amount of time, a lot of town halls to solicit a lot of information from the community when it comes to, you know, the school division and more specifically budget initiatives. We hope to kind of stretch that out a little bit this season and solicit that information throughout the school year, preparing us to 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 move into the next budget season and addressing the strategic plan. So I'll certainly stop there for any questions. Thank you.
Questions for the superintendent?
I'm sorry, could you repeat with the the sort of the breakfasts again?
What the subject is?
Yeah, what is the purpose?
The purpose will be to share accreditation results. We can also share some things about school climate and culture, which is usually crime and violence report, things of that nature. Any information that we have available at that point. On the invitation, we've also solicited any questions that the community may have, so we'll have that information ahead of time and we'll prepare a presentation that addresses our accreditation results. Any climate information that would be pertinent and one a presentation that addresses questions that come from responses to the Google form invitation.
Any other questions for the superintendent? All right, let's begin some board comments and we will start with yeah, I'll wait, we'll do you two last, okay, so you can get accustomed to hearing from the other board members. So, Mr. Rolls?
Yeah, I'll just say as I talked about inviting folks to do the invitation, it is wonderful to get community members in here to plug in, hear from them. It's just a very encouraging way to start the meeting, so it's a blessing. And wonderful to see community members giving back like Mr. Newman, that's a very generous gift donation that he's given to us. So appreciate that very much. And one of the main things I was going to talk about was the curriculum, which I we talked about more during the the policy. But I will mention again that August 22nd, I did K through 12 curriculum training through the SBMA. And we obviously belong to the VSPA as well, but the SBMA was for $250, it's annual membership. It's been probably the, this has been amazing value in terms of professional development there. So that was a very good course itself and they offer very many more too. And also we got, it's just a good supplement because else we got the great support from Elizabeth Ewing helping us to policy, going to this meeting today. She's always very responsive. I appreciate her a lot. SBMA also supplies some legal advice if you needed here and there. And the other thing, and I could have mentioned this last meeting, but I just I forgot. But so a couple meetings ago, if you recall, I talked about Ken Peterson's book, who was a supervisor down in Goochon County. He's just finishing up his third term as a supervisor. And he's laid out, it was just a really good read about the principles of good government. And after coming off of 12 years as a supervisor and his career as an army officer, as well as a financial guy, traveling the world to help restructure debt, he's just got a wealth of knowledge in a lot of different areas. So I have now, since I talked about reaching out to all the people who potentially be on the board supervisors and the school board for next year and see about trying to get together for a strategic meeting, planning meeting to possibly facilitated by Ken Peterson. But of course, it's all kind of up there right now. But so since then, since it's not obvious whether we can or should vote on it prior to January, since we will have new boards then. I've just talked to everyone individually, so so I can say that you know, all everyone who's going to be on the board next year, school board, has agreed to set aside time the first half of February. I mean, and I talked to all the candidates and all the candidates are running unopposed, so I think it's a pretty good bet that that they will.
It's already planned.
Okay, well, so then I talked to all the board supervisors and and held the candidates. And so that's six candidates and then two sitting members, Mr. Collins and Mrs. Bender, who will still be there next in January. And so and all but one agreed to set aside time for the first half of February. So that's overwhelming support. I'll just say, I'm not going to name names, but it's just one candidate who who wouldn't commit. So very likely, 100% of both boards will be on board for it. So that said, given all the input I got from everybody, I asked Ken Peterson to set aside February 5th, so please mark your calendars, set that aside. And I'll send out the emails to the supervisors as well as a hold date. And then I guess we'll look forward as far as at what point we think we need to vote to make it official. And the only thing I'd ask right now is, and there were a couple people out of all those people I talked to that questioned whether it should be Ken Peterson that facilitates. So I just ask if 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 you're one of those people that you think about alternatives and, you know, it seems like it's a long ways off, but there's no way, reason to wait till the last minute. So I think if we wait till the last second, then we will not, it won't happen. And I think one of the big things that we really want to talk about, that's a big thing between the two boards, is working on the budget, right? And so to be able to get together, talk strategically about smarter ways to negotiate the budget before we start the budget season would be priceless. So I don't think we want to delay and miss that opportunity. That's all.
Ms. Hoover?
Well, I wanted to welcome the new student board members present tonight. Hope you're enjoying your stint so far. I wanted to thank King George Elementary Today Show for their intros and their leading of the pledge. And I wanted to thank Ms. Howke for arranging the donation. That was a, that's, I know Ms. Connor's going to enjoy that. Other than that, thank you, Dr. Boyd, once again, for all the work you put into our meetings and our students.
Thank you. Howke?
Oh, where to begin? I, I, Dr. Boyd stole my thunder about the the new budget. I was so excited. I was hopping up and down at home. I'm sure my dogs thought I'd lost my mind. That that really conveys to me that the there is some hope of a bipartisan future in that if everybody can come together about education of public students being primary in our goals, then then we'll be better off. And it did include about 100, I'm sorry. You should have told me. This was probably picking me up. Anyway, it did include about 156 million in new spending for behavioral health services, including money for crisis receiving centers and stabilization, mobile crisis teams and Behavioral Health Authority. It really does provide a support to a group of people who had not received good public services in the past, including education. I want to go on to to say thank you to the King George Lunch Bunch. If you don't know who they are, it is a cooperative group of local churches that mobilizes each summer and they have for a number of years now to deliver free lunches during during the the time when kids are away from the source of their public school meals. And they also typically bring books along and donated books and free books and a variety of it's a wonderful service that these men and women of our community take, give of their time and their efforts, and I want to say a big thank you. Also, I want to tell you how excited I am and we should be about our new CTE position. Ms. Rinco, I think I can say publicly, has agreed to come on board as our person to develop apprenticeships and internships. It it's the vocational opportunities that are so important these days. It's it's getting people out into jobs that have training involved in that process. And and it's it's the support services that our that our communities exist upon, whether it's welding or drafting, or Ms. Rinco can list all the rest of them, but I can't. I I think we we are so fortunate not only to have the position, but to have her. And a special thank you to Jean Newman and to Bill Birmingham, who were part of the donation tonight. That's such a wonderful instrument. Our King George Middle School band did not have one. And it's such a wonderful way to commemorate a person who has passed now, but contributed so much to our community. This band played for many family activities, many things on bass and had a wonderful upbeat sound. These were all people who are employed already as engineers and scientists and and so they were giving of their time also to the community in terms of their music, and their music was fun and great. So thank you to Jean Newman and Bill Birmingham for that that wonderful addition to our music program. And I think that's it.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to start by welcoming Maddie. Was Maddie, is that right? Okay, yeah, Maddie and Chad, welcome back. It's good to see you. Oh, it's exciting to have you both here. So welcome. I my first note was going to be to request an update on our plan for earlier development of the annual budget, and apparently I didn't have to do that because it's already underway. So thank you, Dr. Boyd, for making good on your intentions of getting started ahead of time, so I'm excited to see what comes of that. I was also thrilled by the donation of string bass. I think that's awesome. So well done, Ms. Howke orchestrating, ha ha, no pun intended, the donation of that. And last, I just wanted to give a shout out and say I really liked the weekly communication memo. I know we've been making strides to improve our communication to staff and community members, and I think that was another example of a job well done. So thank you to all, especially Ms. Higgins. So that's all I had.
Thank you. I also would like to welcome Maddie and Chad, and we'll get a chance for you guys to speak after I finish. And also a big shout out and thank you to the Today Show from King George Elementary. And also, Mr. Rolls, just wanted to let you know that I've been in several conversations with various board supervisors about meeting in February, and they are, yes, everyone I've had is in favor of doing that. Not necessarily with Ken Peterson. I've asked Dr. Boyd and then anybody else who would have recommendations as to who might facilitate that joint meeting in February, appreciative. Obviously, it's difficult except for Ms. Bender and Mr. Collins to, you know, make any definite plans until we have the election, but as soon as that's done, of course, I'll reach out to them. But so far, everything looks positive towards having that joint meeting in February. There's been many discussions about that already. So we will look at at who might facilitate and who would be best to facilitate that meeting. Also, I ended up riding a bus. I said I was going to do that when I was first elected and I didn't get to it, but I did ride a bus. It was very interesting. That whole process, I rode it from the middle school as it went to the high school and then as I did the whole route. And I obviously chose the one that ended up at my grandchildren's home, which was next to where I lived, just because it made it easier. But I am going to sometime in the next couple of weeks, ride the morning bus at 4:30 or 5:00 in the morning. It was very interesting. I met with the bus driver, Mr. Bill. And it's interesting about, I learned a lot. One of them was that obviously not all the buses have air conditioning. And it is interesting that at the middle school, where they're waiting for students to come out, all the bus drivers, many of them without air conditioning, turn off their buses and they they congregate in the side of those buses that have air conditioning, which is nice because that saves a little bit of money too. I did notice one concern, and that is something that I did talk to Dr. Boyd about, and that was mentioned by several of the bus drivers when we congregated together in one of the buses of that, or excuse me, people driving often do not pay attention to those flashing red lights in the stop sign, even while I was on the bus. That was already mentioned to me, and I said, my goodness, that's, you know, I could end up hurting somebody or even killing a child. or even killing a child. That's terrible. Well, it ended up that as Mr. Bill was letting somebody off on Route 3, and he was very attentive to that person getting off the bus on that side. On the other side, there was a car that passed him with the big stop thing and everything else. And I was like, there it is. Now, he was looking there, which he should be, to look at that student getting off the bus, and their house was right there, and didn't see that. But how horrible it'd have been if the student, of course, he would have watched. And there's a big bar in front if they go across. And he also sometimes would even honk the horn. He's, the particular bus driver was very attentive to doing the right thing. But that is a huge concern because as was mentioned by another bus driver, and I actually saw it. Now, I wish I'd got the license plate, but it was just happened so quick. I didn't get it. All I knew was a black sedan. So we're going to see what we can maybe do about that. I know that I talked to Dr. Boyd about cameras and so on. Anyway, I'll be riding another bus and maybe more after that. And we'll see what we can do about mitigating any possible dangers to our, the students as they get off these buses. Very nice to go to the first couple of football games, and boy, do we have a good team. Holy cow, man, I was impressed. We have a couple of players that's clearly going to go to possibly some Division One schools with scholarships. And it was impressive, so impressive, it was almost embarrassed for the other team, to be honest. Let's just hope we can continue winning as we started off the year. Also, thanks again to the Newman and Birmingham donation. And again, Ms. Hawk for facilitating all that. Thank you so much. That was, that was fantastic. I think that is all.
One quick comment, just in case anybody knows of any ukuleles out there. You sure can use them, even baritone or whatever you've got, you know.
Yeah, I would also say that I did see that email, or the V S B A, I think it went out about the budget. And I was also very excited to see most everything we were hoping for has come to fruition. And it was very exciting to see that. All right, let's go to our student reps. And we will begin, if you don't mind, Chad, again, introduce yourself and give us some, some insight of your school.
Hi, guys. My name's Chad Brown. I'm a junior at King George High School. First, I want to say thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm honored to be here. I want to congratulate Ms. Rinco about your promotion or new position. So I have a few things from King George High School. I got the chance today. So I'm in our teacher cadet program at our high school, Teachers for Tomorrow. And as one of our assignments outside of school, we can attend meetings, help teachers, kind of get outside of contract hours, because we all know that teachers do so much outside of school. So I chose to go to a departmental chair meeting. And so today I got to attend one of those. And thankfully, at the end of the meeting, I was able to get some feedback from different, like, teachers about stuff that's going on at our school, specifically the department chairs. So let's start with the, I do have from Mr. Addison and Ms. Charlotte Strauss, a thank you to the board for coming out for the mock interviews and all the people that you allowed to come out. They just wanted to say a huge thank you to you guys. Academics, obviously, it's the beginning of the school year. We're getting adjusted. King George High School now offers Dune Roman United States History, partnered with R C C, taught by Ms. Jessica Wilkerson. And personally, I'm in that class, and it's been such a great class, very informative, the curriculum, and a chance to earn six college credits with a discounted tuition. So we definitely, more Dune Roman classes coming. So that's been great. Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Morrison have started back the college boot camp and scholarship sessions, which we are so happy, first of all, we're so happy to have Ms. Mitchell back at the high school, and Ms. Morrison's great. And so they are starting back with those. And I attended one with Ms. Rinco was present during Pass. And it was great, very informative on all the different stuff for colleges. And parents, you get a lot out of it, definitely. So we have this thing at high school called Pass. It's, I don't know what it stands for. But we started our new schedule today where they're trying to promote more, you know, activities and clubs and for students to go to, and academic remediation for students who need help in certain areas. And so we started that off today, and there's definitely, of course, a few kinks to work out as there is anything new. But overall, it went really well. And at the staff meeting, the school, they were really pleased by it. We have a lot of different fun clubs, but we also do, are huge on academic support and finding teachers for every student to kind of have a bond to or figure out a way to kind of get the education that they, you know, want and extra help. Obviously, for our sports, football's doing great. I'm managing the field hockey team, and they're off to a really good season so far with new coach, Ms. Kelsey Trainer-Brown. And then homecoming's coming up. We have our date for September 30th. The theme is a starry night, and so it should be good. We have really exciting plans for homecoming week, and obviously all like the pep rally stuff and all that fun stuff. And ROTC will be presenting at the Commander's Game on December 3rd. Mr. Watson told us about that, and the high school's really excited for that, obviously. And we encourage any of you guys to come out and go see the game. And I think that's all that's going on at the school at the moment.
All right, thank you very much. Maddie?
Hi, my name's Maddie. I'm in eighth grade. I'm from King George Middle School. We just recently had our growth assessments for math and English. A couple, a lot of kids were a lot stressed out about it because they didn't want to do bad. Otherwise, it went really good. A lot of students have been complaining about how short the lunches, because recently we've been like sitting down, and then they called to bring the trash cans around. People just don't have enough time to eat. And then also people are complaining about the food, that it's not good, and they want better food. Sports are doing really good. And that's about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And again, we appreciate it. I know that Chad, there's a rotating basis with three of you, I understand. And who's the third one that he will come next time?
The A's name is Connor. I forget his last name, but it's the search of me. He turned from my game, myself, and Connor, I cannot remember his last name.
That's okay. That's all right. So we'll see him, and then it'll just be the three of you to rotate every time. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that pursuant to State Code Section 2.23712A of the Code of Virginia, that the board convene in a closed meeting to review hires, substitutes, and stipends, and for discussion specifically the evaluation of the division superintendent as permitted under 2.2-3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're in closed session. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're in closed session. Still a couple of people here. That's nice. Do we have a motion to return to open session? Do we have a motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code Section 2.23712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting by the public body.
I second and certify.
Certify.
Ms. Hulk?
I certify.
And I also certify. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in open session. All right, action resulting from the meeting, do we have a motion to approve the personnel presented?
I move that we approve the personnel actions as presented.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. They are all approved. Do we, just to make a mention before we adjourn, we're going to continue with the superintendency evaluation at the next board meeting on September the 18th. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're adjourned.